...in the last one session. We will continue with the new policies in section 2000 under Board Operations. The ones we shared last month are on the agenda for first reading this evening. And we will approve those together, the approval process for those that you sent. Today's policies will be shared and discussed in time for input. Will follow the same procedure. Any changes, suggestions that you may have, revisions, um, to third today, email those to the entire board and to me. And we'll send those to the committee for further review. Those policies will go into first floor reading for the exam. Come by our office and review school improvement plans for those schools in the district. Because school improvement plans will be on the exam board anyway. And we'd like for you to have time to review those. Schools have done a great job with those. We are still just editing and providing. But we should have one for you to see so that you feel comfortable bringing them. Anytime at the two-person.
This one is a big specific gap. Previous work we wanted our feedback for this section.
The fifteenth of the month.
Fifteen.
Fifteen in the month. We will not have another policy work session until January. And at that time, we will start section 4000, which is our student section. And Jan, we'll go through, just as we did last time, showing you the policy up here and then getting your input and all the way through. And if you have questions, please let us know.
So Chapter Connie, right before we started, we did not have any additional changes to your previous theories that you will be considering tonight. Not saying you can't raise them up tonight, but at least we did not receive any change whatsoever from yesterday. This continues with the series 2000. You'll note that we, the cover sheet in your folder talks about a couple where we, the committee, which is Ron, Art, Chip, Craig, Connie, and so. We do have a few, not necessarily changes but modifications. And again, in the MCFBA packet, when they give you four policies, often they give you options. So many of those may not be strictly changed, they may just be options that they gave. The ones that are listed are to 2300, which is the first one we're starting with, 2310, 2325, 2330, and 2335. Other than that, all of them are pretty much retained out of the MCFBA. We'll still take a look at these, doesn't mean you can't change some, but those were the only ones that we felt that we would need to change or alter. So we'll take a look at 2300 first, which deals with board meetings. Hopefully you have a chance to at least glance through the, pretty much standard stuff on where we had our first area that we felt there was a reason to make that change. And again, this is an option given to us in the MCFBA templates. Under emergency meetings, who decides when to call an emergency meeting? The committee felt that rather than having two members comply on an emergency meeting, that a majority of members requesting it would be a logical reason. Or if the chairperson determines that a meeting is necessary, so we made that number. We also made a shift in, for retreats and workshops, if you decided, for example, if you had determined that you wanted to take some action on the policies that you're just reviewing today, we felt it was important to the board to have that flexibility, making sure that there's advance notice provided to the public that you're going to take some action. So unless we, unless we actually state that there is going to be actions taken, the preference is not really to take action in a workshop. So you'll see the red, um, language change there. Add D to nothing theory and with advance notice to the public, action may be taken in a work session or retreat. So we added that. And then the only other change here, under other special meetings, may be scheduled, a chairperson or the vice-chairperson, if the chairperson is unable or unwilling to act, will call a special meeting to address the topic when, and again, we made a majority of numbers opposed to two members to request. Or if the chairperson determines that the meeting is necessary. So the chairperson can control the desire of the board, but the board, if a majority wants to have a meeting, and that's the end of our change.
I guess I have a concern with the last part, we said the chairperson may come to the decision of the board. The chairperson is not a greater part of the board, it's still like 1/7th of the board as a fraction, as opposed to being, um, you know, having more weight. So they're both counts, same everybody else.
I think the reason for that is that, and that's always been, been that kind of change here. The reason for that is, let's say we needed a special meeting for some emergency, a true emergency, and the entire board cannot get together to vote this way, that the board chairs still have the opportunity to call that special meeting even if all the board members cannot be reached. Well, again, they take the emergency, that's why I think of that.
I don't think it's red to indicate that the chairperson has the right to prohibit the case called by majority members. It's a conjunctive court, so it's either. I think that's the primary concern. I can't say that maybe wrong, but if you say come up, it's not really.
Well, if the chairman calls a meeting and he's not going to shut it up, it can't have a meeting anyway. That's right.
Logistically speaking, I think maybe that's the reason for the two-person, two people can decide about calling an emergency meeting. I think it would be hard to get four people, maybe even contacted by phone to say, you know, do you think we should have an emergency meeting? I think that's probably the reason that they put two, two people in there. And I don't have a problem with, you know, saying, you know, verbatim what came from the School Board Association manual. I just think logistically, it's going to be hard to get a majority, even contacted without leaving messages. If there's true emergency, you know, I think two people will be able to determine that. So that's my, just, you know, my perspective on that. 2310, public participation at board meetings. Several different categories of participation here. Here is the Part A, is the request to place an item on the agenda. And again, we're not making any recommendations on this one. One that we're taking right from the School Board Association templates. Explain how to place an item on the agenda. Talks about public comment and having at least one part of the regular WWD, both sides versus the road of the board, chief, senior students. One thing that they do, that we actually researched, a number of other school systems, and often the school board set a certain amount of time, not just per person, but the common amount of time seems to be about 30 minutes. If the 30 minutes, um, isn't used up, it certainly could be, or orders used up, it could be extended, but often they set that. This gives you that option, if you want to do that, it doesn't say you have to, but it is something that all other school systems need to do. It also says the superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. One way that can be done, again, is, for example, when we had our, um, our religion group, so many people speaking, rather than sticking with a three-minute time limit, you might look around and see that you have 75 people to speak and say, in the interest of time, we're going to try to let everybody speak, but please limit your comments to 30 seconds, a minute, whatever you would feel appropriate to do. You have flexibility there, you have flexibility within the, to make changes based on how you expect the meeting to go, for example. There are many. Down here under report of complaint. Complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policies, quality of educational program, or school facilities should be submitted initially for response to the school system official responsible for the program or facility, or to the superintendent. Superintendent or designated shall make available this policy and other relevant grievance procedures to any individual or group to make a complaint. And then what's in red here, this is some red that Jan, Connie, because of.
It's new language, yeah.
This is new language? Oh, this is Wake. This is what Wake adds. We haven't seen a lot of school systems add something, this is what Wake adds. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment stuff. Concerns related to personnel issues will be addressed through the board's grievance policy.
Something that came up as the raw comment that I thought, I don't think that they ever had them, but I think it's important for support members to help the chairman out. And not only do we need to stop the negative comments about personnel, but also we need to stop positive comments about personnel. Yes, about personnel. So I think it's important to have everyone on the board that we're civil, we're consistent with those sort of positive now. I was trying to remember if anyone has ever come up and does a public comment, something positive about personnel. But, uh, it may have happened once, but I can think of, but.
We discussed that, we had a conference call with Janine at the School Board Association. She brought that to our attention, so it's best to be used on. And we can recommend that because we also have young school members involved in public comments, it's important to public.
And notice this is also more about individual personnel matters. So if someone wants in a public comment to get up and say that, you know, I want to thank these faculty and staff and subjects at school for their common job. Or I don't like the faculty and staff or their awful job. You know, that would be appropriate, public comment, but when it turns to one individual personnel issue, one, I don't like this teacher for this reason, then that is something that's better involved in grievance. I mean, if they come to the board later, you know, for, but that's not the most appropriate manner, at least to deal with individual personnel.
Or a team of teachers. That's getting pretty close to personal, isn't it?
Yeah.
I guess I have a problem with, if we approved this policy prior to approving the one for student apparent grievance procedures, cross-reference at the bottom, um, we aren't really, we can't refer somebody to the grievance procedure that we haven't passed yet. So they would have no outlet for their concern.
We still have a grievance.
We still, where are our other policies?
So everything will be cross-referenced to what exists now and still changes. So we can know it on here, for the new ones, the other one will be cross.
Can you give me that policy number, the existing one?
And, yeah, which kind? I know we have that at employees, 79.
It's 730, I believe, 730 or 730 hours. Policy 730. Here's the right thing.
She told me it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not aware of the grievance policy for parents. Which is actually coming up, it's been ran up tonight when I'm leaving.
It's coming up in the next section of the 4000 series. So it will be in the next group to be taken with the right. The 4000-10, or the early one?
Can you email me the link of the passwords? Because I don't have that email that was sent at the last meeting, changed the password. I'm sorry, use my school board account, I don't have that email.
That's a specific, yeah, that is certainly good in the personnel.
That's part, well, this is a procedure for the personnel.
This one is more entirely.
Well, you'll have one next morning, so.
But in the interim, anytime that we are not having all of our policies available, we will certainly tell any parent if they have concerns, if we get parent calls frequently.
Do you mind speaking into the mic when you, thank you very much?
Could you repeat that, I could hear.
We will certainly add that as our 4000 series comes to the work session in January. That will be one of the first policies. And we will have, we will help any parent that has an issue or would like to have help in solving a problem and solution at a school setting, just as we always do, until we have that full of policy.
So right, right here, it says, I mean, within the body, the complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policies, quality of educational facilities should be submitted. So that addresses it right here in the policy, does it not, or not, some misunderstanding something?
Yeah, generally it does, yes. If you have a complaint about something going on at the school, it should go reported to the principal of that school.
Whoever's in charge of it.
Or you can always report to the superintendent.
And we take parent calls daily, and I can.
Yeah, I think the issue is that there's no appeal process to take it to the board if they're not kind of happy with the decision made at the local school level or the superintendent. Is, can we, I don't know if you could pull up policy 4000-10? I just wanted to see if that grievance policy addresses those issues.
For student discipline and athletic experience, do you have the right to?
Or, I'm sorry, setting discipline?
For student discipline or athletic issues. Other comments, I'll mention. Thank you.
Clients that are at the meeting call. Is it anybody? With the policy number 2320?
I believe the ones that are separate, the ones that have read changes in the others.
You've got several.
Staple the others don't have, probably changes.
We need to do 2325 and board meeting news coverage.
All we took out here was where they have an antiquated statute about charging a listener a fee of up to $25. Prey the cost of the public to listen to meetings. I don't think there are any that have to do, people will listen to the audio, it's posted on the website. But if you'd like to charge, it's very expensive.
Thank you.
I'm curious about the last sentence. Says that the board helps a meeting by conference, telephone call, or similar means, provides some means for most of the public to listen to the meeting. And I think, I guess that's true, when we call in, if we can't be at a meeting, or we do the phone call, we'll put on speakerphone so everyone can hear. I guess that would apply to that as well.
Well, mainly apply really, if we had, if we were scattered throughout the world and decided to have a meeting, that the public would have the same opportunity to listen, but that'd be a different fashion. Of course, there's the means of doing it now, necessarily cheap, but it can be done.
This is regarding the board meeting agenda. The change is, and this is a fill in the blank, um, I believe, where each board member will receive a copy of the agenda no later than four calendar days prior to the meeting. And the agenda will be available for public inspection and or distribution no later than two calendar days prior to the meeting. And I think the reason for that is to try to get it to the board in time where you can see what's going on before it's released to the public.
I don't know if anybody would consider that we just distribute the agenda to the public at the same time it's sent out to the board, because we can't make any changes to it. Once it, once we're to see it, until we get to the actual board meeting.
The policy is to give the board members an opportunity to review the material, so they'll be ready for answering questions, they might try to make a public, it's just a question.
I mean, we typically send out with, Connie, now, Ron, you go, what does the meeting now do? Advance delivery of meeting materials, this is similar, I'm not entirely sure what this is saying. At least four calendar days prior to each regular special board meeting, if the superintendent shall get the items. I think the language we just changed is, so that everybody can understand what a work day was.
I think it would be helpful to add work sessions on here too. As far as like this today, an information session maybe is a better word. Because it would have been helpful to review these policies, you know, before I got here. I missed it, it was weird, it was emailed?
Emailed.
Okay, I just didn't see it.
We didn't on the first meeting when we were here, but we did last, or for this session. We'll try to do that every session, so that you do have time to review these before coming.
But I don't know if we need to add that, I don't know if a special board meeting would include an information session too like this, or?
We can add that, if that's the desire of the board.
I think like, for example, the session we had about the hazardous waste, it would have been very helpful to have the soil and gas sampling report in advance to look at. There was no way to look at it during the meeting and try to listen to the speakers at the same time, so just definitely.
Okay, I think the difference too, if you look at item number three here, that would assist board members to become informed of the issues proposed for board consideration. The purpose of an information system is to inform you for your consideration at an upcoming meeting that you'll have, as opposed to something where you're going to have to take action. So it's kind of hard to, given you everything in advance, part of giving it to you, well, that's the purpose of the information. Right, exactly, yeah. There's no action, there's no material from all of this. All right, we'll back up and get the ones that are not. Back to clients that are at the meeting call. Anybody have any questions on this?
And in this pack of policies there, there are changes, recommendations.
Right out of the, right out of this school board association. And law, legal and all.
I'm just checking my email. Which email did it come from?
It came on November, it was, it was November 2nd, six oh one, Friday, November 2nd, six oh one, sent to all the board members and, I'm off.
Thank you.
So, find the series 2000 policy, November 8.
2321.
2321.
Uh, 2320 is open market, anybody?
Everybody have a chance to look at it?
2320.
Did anyone have any questions or comments about 2320?
I mean, it's just really topic statute.
Any, about say, 2320?
Done.
2321?
Well, I did not receive it, I just checked my email. And perhaps it's on my personal email, but it didn't come with the board email.
Do you need to send to other of your emails?
All right, 2320. Anyone to check the second reading?
Which relates to closed sessions. Noting that they'll only be held when required to permit the board to act in the public interest as provided by law. And here, unless the permitted purposes against, Chad pretty much just law, right?
Sure, that was.
What the law is, why you can enter closed session meetings. What the law is, why you can enter closed session meetings.
Comments or questions?
We often have a problem with, with some, some.
Two hundred.
Hundred per session, most of the pages.
Hundred per minute, for instance.
And we don't even make the change.
Good reminder. Any other comments or questions? Twenty-three, forty?
Wonder which year was allowed version of laws to be used, might confirm.
Questions, John? Twenty-three, forty-one? That how long? Questions? Twenty-three, forty-two. Very method for both voice load. But you could also again, you know, you're not sure. That's the balance. Questions? Maybe not?
Twenty-four hundred, board policies. Says that you've got policy. We've adopted. Twenty-four ten, policy development. This is kind of a new one for us, you want to read through this one? Any board member, individual, group of students, group of citizens, students or employee may initiate proposals for new policy or changes to existing policies. The initiator shall refer the suggestions to the superintendent for study prior to public discussion of the proposal and board action. As appropriate, the development of proposed policy, the superintendent will seek input from or attorney, professional school, personal, parent, student. As appropriate.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we have to be careful to keep the balance, you know, between the duties of the superintendent and board.
Read the next one.
Okay.
Policies may be proposed for adoption, amendment or repeal at any board meeting by any member of the board provided superintendent. Thus, a place to propose policy on the agenda must be made in accordance with board policies.
So does that mean?
But policies.
You have to go to the superintendent first in order to get it on the agenda?
Or whatever. Whatever the policy is, that's how you get it on the agenda. Whenever that changes. Do note that policies introduced and recommended to the board will not be adopted until a public meeting. Thus, time is given to permit further study and also to present an opportunity for interested parties to react. However, temporary approval may be granted by the board in lieu of formal policy under emergency conditions or special events that take place before formal action.
I think the purpose, if you read two, four, one, zero and ten, two, four, two, zero, is, well, yes, board members can have, I mean, if they want to have the policy, they can suggest them, but there can be major ramifications of policy decisions that could have wholly unintended consequences that aid the board member or the public may not take into consideration. And so, the idea is to let the superintendent and the administration review the impact of policy changes or policy considerations. It doesn't prevent that policy go forward, be adopted, but the board itself can't quite, well, I, it would not be good policy to think that the board would adopt something without having, had the administration take a look at it and see what the ramifications that could be unintended or not. So that's kind of the purpose, is to, to let the administration study, review it and talk about it, and then to be able to intelligently address board member requests and comments when it's being moved for adoption. But I think that's how that works. It doesn't prevent anyone from wanting, and two, four, one, zero does not prevent a policy from going to, it just gives the administration time to review it and to see how it may affect other things. And it may, you know, yeah, it may be wholly, I mean, the policy may be discussing something that's entirely illegal or, you know, some, some, something like that can be dealt with very quickly. So I think it's more of just a time-saving matter and also a way that the administration can prepare for, could be sweeping changes, could be very minor changes.
Dissemination and preservation of policy. Basically, in summary states that we have to have the policies in a place where they're accessible as in electronic. We do have them available in physical form as well, but we don't make massive copies of that for a number of reasons. Not the least of which is trying to keep them updated as policies get changed. Very hard if you have notebooks distributed throughout a school system to keep up with making sure that they're up to date. We keep them up to date on the website all the time. We keep them up to date in central office and in physical form. And then, if people have a need to get them, I even hand carry a book on time to a man offering, so we'll be happy to. It's what we need to do, it's what we need to see in paper form for some reason.
The nice part about the school board association is that we will have yearly updates provided for us when there are legislative changes. So that's part of the benefit of the subscription that will help us stay current. Any questions?
Twenty-four forty, policy review and evaluation.
Twenty-four twenty.
We have a question. This is the second paragraph, can you expand on, pardon me? I'm asking you, turn around.
Yeah, the, I was just looking at that myself. I can't really think of a situation where that would come up, uh, because generally our laws are written in summertime, and most of the time they don't go into effect until January of the next year. So we will have had plenty of time to, our state laws at least, the board will have plenty of time to have new policy in place to view. What this is talking about is, in the middle of the law changes and it's in effect, it doesn't matter what your policy says, the law trumps policy. But I think what this is saying is that, in the event that a law has changed and it has immediate ramifications, or perhaps the case has changed in interpretation of the law and is immediate, the superintendent can make those changes that are immediately necessary to comply with baseline of law. If we don't want to have a policy that says one thing and the law goes to something different. And then, if the board can go back and change it, however, there's room for interpretation, a room to change, the board can do that prospectively at its next meeting. But it gives the superintendent the opportunity to say, okay, the law was black on Wednesday, it's now yellow on Thursday, and our policy has to be easier like that. The board, you know, it's not, the board doesn't have to come together and, you know, make a change to a policy in two days. So it's a very limited scope in what the superintendent can do. But I can only think of change, maybe changing the case law, or when a court says this and has affected them immediately, we might have to change, we might have to change the policy quickly.
I can give you an example of something that, that thought might have been applicable to our system that was not. And this definitely the pay schedule for employees. There was an interpretation that they could be paid on a certain scale. Then interpretation turned out to be changed, I believe it turned out to be lawful. The school systems were notified, it was, it was mistaken to thought that we were one of the ones that was running compliance that we changed. It turns out we were and always had been. They were confusing us with another system. But the other system that was not in compliance had to make a change immediately. They didn't have an opportunity, it had to be done that day. And that's the reason that the call came so quickly. Had it actually been applicable to our system, superintendent would have had to have this kind of policy to leave in place, otherwise we would have been violated by the statute. That's, that's the kind of thing that happened three years ago.
It's a narrow policy that allows us, and like I said, only, and like C S O said, only in the small situations where some of these we know immediately. It shouldn't affect general statutes, even federal statutes, because we know well in advance when they're going to change. Because generally, there's a lead period for them going to effect, but like those interpretations of state regulations that can change from a nine or the Supreme Court says, this is how, you've got to do it now, then we need to be able to change it quickly.
Any other questions?
Twenty-four fifty, suspension of board policy. Operation of any section or sections of board policy is not established by law or contract may be suspended temporarily by a majority of the board members present at the board meetings held in compliance of law or board policy. Administration and policy absence, twenty-four sixteen. Board of Education delegates to the superintendent of schools to power acting cases in which the board has not provided policy statements to guide them to creative action. Superintendent shall inform the board promptly of such action or what they need to call.
This is legally a very important policy because it does give the superintendent the right to take action when there isn't a meeting clearly on point, so it divides on protection both to the superintendent and the school system. We're not operating outside of, he, he's not operate, he or she is not operating outside of any express authority.
What's the difference between doing this and calling an emergency meeting of the board if there was a concern? If we already have the, we're going to include the emergency meeting, is this really necessary?
I mean, sometimes, the only thing I would say is, if it rises to the level of emergency meeting, obviously you can have that, but sometimes there is a situation that needs an answer immediately. And, I mean, emergency meetings, maybe you can get the people together in four or five hours, but sometimes you need a decision to be, a student matter, need a decision made immediately. And there's going to be a situation where there's not going to be something that covers it, you just can't have policies covering every situation. So, I mean, I imagine it would be sparingly, certainly if I was the superintendent, I would not be going out on a limb and making up things when I don't have express authority. But at the same time, by golly, something needs to be done, needs to be done. And if you wait four hours, you could be putting, perhaps, in certain situations, the student safety address or, or a, a something, some safety issue. And, and that's why we need someone to be able to make a decision quickly.
I guess I would be more comfortable if we could add a sentence, just to make sure there's that balance of powers there. That there would be agreements process, you know, that we could link it to that cross reference, that grievance process, that an appeal could be made to the board if, you know, a party involved was not happy with that, that decision.
Are you asking that if they're not, uh?
I don't think this is, they're not going on an emergency situation.
I mean, I, it could, we don't know what the situation may be, I could just. Right, I'm just saying, if the superintendent did that in a case where there was no policy to guide him, perhaps it's possible they could make the wrong decision or something, and that the injured party would want to appeal the decision to the board.
But I, I, well, they, the, appeal rights inherent, I mean, at any point, your parents could be able to still appeal or administer a personal. So I, I, I don't necessarily see why cross referencing, cross referencing that would be unnecessary, but I think that's, that's inherent in every policy. But that's.
But there's not, there's not a prohibition for appeal of administrative decision, hence the, we need to implement the policy for giving that, right?
Well, under the, when we get to, I mean, the new agreements, my parent has, I mean, this would be agreement, I suppose, to, to pretend to make something that, that was, the parent would be able to call a agreement exactly at a meeting. So I can meet, it's covered. It's, yes, any, I mean, anytime, the parents would be able to agree them, right, this would be covered, so that goes to every policy.
Right, I guess because it's cross referenced, I mean, it's a previous, I just.
I, I think I'd call and have a, a good example of the situation where this would be useful.
I would really envision this for emergency safety issues, and I guess the best example I can give you is the, um, the accident that a young man, a young student had, K C Robertson, high school. If you recall, immediately mandated to run out of my office, and with, with no policy in place, immediately a mandate, there would be no students whatsoever on, in those type of areas. That, that's where I would envision this, um, this particular, um, policy or authority to, to be used strictly in a, in a safety. And to me, that needed immediate, immediate concern, policy of, of, of the system.
Right, and I guess the, the policy, um, that was. Right, and I guess the, the policy that was put in place temporarily to prevent the Gideon's from distributing materials in the schools is another example. And I guess I'm just curious if that made me think about it. Is that still in place that, um, that, that delicious material can't be distributed right now?
We now have a distribution policy.
The policy for distribution is still in place. I mean, the one we just adopted, but we don't have the, we haven't actually put in place that, we're going to talk about it tonight, the.
That's policy, you didn't adopt policy six fifty-two and six fifty-three. Six fifty-three and six fifty-two both have some relevance to your question. But our discussion tonight, I think, is going to be more direct than answers.
Right, so, yeah, currently they, they can't distribute the bibles right now.
Policy twenty-four seventy, administrative procedures. Superintendent is responsible for developing administrative procedures necessary to implement board policies. In developing procedures, the superintendent should consult appropriate with principals and other school system personnel, parents, students, the board attorney and other professionals. The superintendent may establish formal administrative procedures or use less formal documents such as memoranda, so long as the documents are preserved and disseminated in accordance with board policy. Or they review an administrative procedure at any time and direct the superintendent to modify, expand or omit proceedings. School rules. Principal, school personnel are encouraged to initiate improvements to the educational program and services for students through school rules, standards and procedures. Unless specifically addressed by the board, the superintendent may determine what matters will be addressed through administrative procedures developed in accordance with policy twenty-four seventy, which we just talked. Uh, and what matters may be addressed through school rules, standards or procedures established by the principal. Principals are responsible for school rules, standards and procedures and are encouraged to involve staff, parents, students, professionals and citizens as appropriate to the issue. At any time the board or superintendent may review and direct the principal to modify, expand or omit school rule standard procedure. Policies must be consistent with applicable policies of the board, the administrative procedures of the superintendent and any other applicable law. Principals are responsible for completing handbooks and those staff and student handbooks are located on websites and then pre copies available that will contain school rules and procedures for each school to be sent home to parents who may not have computer access.
Yeah, this one had, there are two options the school board association provides. Option A is a more detailed one, which provides really a lot of more procedures in it. Option B just says basically the first paragraph, these are open. Most boards that we work with have done option A, um, because it provides more guidance. We recommend option. And this is pretty straightforward to process, right, to hear. And these are board hearings, so these are going to be applicable to personnel matters that come to mind, student discipline matters. Any hearing that comes before the board, this is one to use a policy that. As you can see, it is cross referenced with post policy. Discrimination, harassment, student parent grievance, grievance for employees, the delicious policy, the student admissions policy. This is kind of the name, the workhorse of the board hearings.
The chap, if I understand correctly, is this option as as it is in the school association, you only not craft it yourself. Same one as you get a choice of option A or, or ended in option A.
Yeah.
Going down by choosing the law, is there anything?
No, I mean, it just covers, option B really doesn't cover anything aside from, like I said, assuming the first paragraph. Um, and so the problem is when you, this happened the other day in, I think, Swain County. We had to craft basically a whole procedure for hearings for the board because it didn't have it. Uh, so I think they're going to change now to option A just because this already contains everything. Because we need procedures for a specific hearing, we can always draft them with those. But this as written, you can deal with without any situation that comes to you. As, as, as of right now, we don't have to change anything. Now, that doesn't mean we, we won't given what hearings come, each hearing has three o'clock, but this is pretty much set to go.
Questions, comments?
And again, if you need more time to review this, you certainly can take some more, get a, have changes.
Are there any restrictions as far as like you can't file a grievance if it happened, um, six months ago? That they don't feel to have a hearing, I don't know if that's, it should be in here?
Those are in the individual policies.
Okay.
Uh, because they're different for each one. Um, and so you'll find those, I mean, there's a specific, the statute actually deals with student discipline. So it's specific to the employee grievance. I'm not sure what, off the top of my head what it says, but each one will have its own statute of limitations. So putting one right here may not necessarily capture all of them.
Consultants to the board, policy twenty-six hundred. A situation demands the board may utilize consultants from various fields, including architects, personnel consultants, instructional, educational consultants. In each case, the board will advertise the proposals as required by law or as deemed necessary by the board and will enter into a written contract with the consultant collective outlining tasks, gives the core and data for the session evaluation. And I want to thank the all, if I'm reading correctly, all contracts that happen to you.
Well, that's.
I was going to ask, would it be, would it be appropriate for a change in a, something along the lines of, I'm not assuming it's in this appropriate language, but in each case, the board will advertise proposals if and as required by law. Just, the true word, proposals, as, if, and, it's not if and. I just want to suggest that, I think there are certain things that, that. It's not required and if you, if you read it strictly of the rich, it could indicate that it's placing a greater burden than it required by law.
What about when you hire a consultant to do a team building activity, that would be an example?
I mean, there are others, but certainly that's one.
That was my question as well.
Yeah, I remember the board, for example, years ago, had a tree where we went with, one of those corporate companies to do that. I don't think it worked. Advertised, I didn't know this, but that. And it wasn't required by statute.
Very few things are actually required by statute.
I just, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I like that.
Policy twenty-six ten, board attorney. As needed, the board will enter into contracts for legal services to the school system, including both legal advice and representation and litigation. Any attorney retained by the board or the superintendent through school system funds represents a legal entity of the school system and not any individual board member or administrator. Superintendent may consult the board attorney as needed to carry out administrative operations and to protect the board and the school system from liability. Other staff may consult with the board attorney following procedures established by the superintendent. Chairperson of the board normally will decide for board members when to speak legal advice or systems on certain matters. An individual member of the board desires to consult directly with the attorney, the board member shall notify the chairperson of the information to be sought. If it is determined that legal assistance is necessary and has not been sought previously to this matter, the board member will be directed to consult individually with the attorney. Questions raised by members of the board and any attorneys replied will be reported to all board members. The chairperson of the board committee may consult with the board attorney on issues that arise out of and in connection with the committee's work. The inquiry and response will be reported to all board members. Last one. Twenty-six fifty, later on with school board associations. Board instructs the superintendent to keep it fully informed of the affairs of the state and national school board association and to keep these organizations informed and directed regarding the board's concerns and official positions on matters of common concern. The superintendent shall include in each year's budget the cost of membership in the North Carolina School Board Association. All board members are encouraged to attend meetings, conferences and seminars of the state and national organizations in order to familiarize themselves with related developments and school affairs. Board also will attempt to be officially represented in association affairs through the election of delegates and or servers to the governing assemblies of these.
That is the other half of section two thousand, the four U's. As you think about these or spend time with these and you see ideas that you want to bring forward to the committee, please email them to the board members and myself and then later than fifteen, so much, and then I will send those to.
Everyone get this, if I have. Eric, and there's the members of the committee, just make sure you send an email to copy everyone.
I have a suggestion without having sent a email to everybody, I don't know if this, this.
May, may not be necessary.
Much in that word, please. But because there are numerous cross reference policies which will be adopted, um, later, would it be appropriate in the case to be, something along the lines of, except, any cross reference is made to a policy which yet to be adopted. So reference will lead to the policy currently existing.
I like the more education.
That is, that is.
Yeah. The intent is there'd be two, on the, on the, I understand there's a tax that it might be helpful to say that on which.
So that everyone understands that we may not have a policy that, that's.
It's cross reference.
Seventy-six, oh, one, but we find the one that best fits, uh, and make that application.
Any other questions or comments?
I got, in general, are these, are these more detailed or less detailed?
More detailed, more of them, more policies, more detailed.
So, and how would you feel about adding the two? I assume we're going to try to keep up to use the budget, all the costs. There's a whole purpose of this, because they have the normal, and, and.
Yes.
But is there, is there a lot of stuff that you can add to that?
Um, in certain areas, especially like the student section.
Student section, we're going over now, David, he tells me daily, practically. There are a lot of things in that that they like more to keep, but they're also trying to be within the spirit of keeping things as minimal as possible because all purposes, when we get these updates, we're going to save money and deal with the opposite. So that, they're dealing with that. Board members, any other questions or comments? I don't want.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I was going to send everybody an email with the grievance process and other school system uses. And I, it seems like it's on their website for parents. It's very easy to understand. I just don't want when we get to forty-ten hours to get bogged down and make that something to compare with, um, because it's, it's very straightforward.
Anyone else? All right, the board, board question is now over.
Thank you.
Thank you.